Right.
Oh, no, I'm still studying.
Yeah.
Love you.
There, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you?
There we are.
Headache that won't stop. Great.
I'd like to call this meeting of Madison Public Schools Board of Education to open. They have no rights to infracture the angels. Glad to reach just to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic where it sustains, one nation under God, in its own liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, your next item on our agenda at opening the pledge is our school slash community session. Do we have any public participation from anyone in the present audience? If not, do we have anyone online who wants to comment?
I don't see any answers.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to our board event, student representatives report, Brooke and Grace.
Yeah, okay. So we've had a really busy start to the school year. Recently, we had the parent teacher conferences, which were really well attended. I know my parents went and they always find it really informative. And from all the teachers, it seemed like there was a really nice turnout, which is always nice to have the parents kind of understand more about the curriculum that we experience every day. It was also the midpoint for our grades last Friday. Kind of a scary point for me, but it's kind of nice to see how you're doing. It doesn't really affect much, it's just kind of like a progress report. There was a mental health day on Wednesday, tomorrow Worldwide Mental Health. I was a part of planning it through Interact. And it was a really cool experience. We had different breakout groups, there were different community members that came. I know I did bingo with the senior citizens. And there were field games, there were nature walks. It was just kind of to kind of relax from the hectic school environment that we experience so often and kind of be able to reconnect. So that was really cool. And then we also had counselor meetings, which were grade specific for us. There was a lot of college planning for the freshmen. It was just an introduction as to what the year was going to look like, or rather the high school experience. And then we also had the club fair during this Worldwide Mental Health Day kind of break in our schedule. And this was the first time that it was schoolwide, each grade got to participate in the club fair. I really liked this design because as a junior, there were clubs that were completely unfamiliar to me that I'm able to get involved with, whereas in the past, it's been all freshmen are the only people who can attend the club fair. And then I'm also in the Make-A-Wish Club and we had a ton of participation from all the grades, which was really cool to see. And then on October 1st and 2nd, we had our PSATs for the sophomores and juniors. It was a good experience, there weren't any technical issues or anything like that. And I think people really appreciated getting to see the format before we'll have to take the standardized SATs.
I'm glad I'm over with all that. That was a rough time. But moving forward in the next upcoming weeks, the regular season for the fall sports has come to an end. So entering championship seasons, I know SEC starts on Thursday. We've had amazing athletics per usual. What's also really great is that our fan base has been going to all types of sports. And I know our AD, Mr. Farrell, has been trying to promote this. He's been doing a great job. And not only has the representation been great, but the sportsmanship inside the student sections has been awesome, which is a great represent, uh, reputation to have in the school. And now a little bit over a week is Halloween. And as always, the students and staff are encouraged to dress up in some fun and school appropriate costumes. I know I'm always excited to see what the different departments are gonna do. The math department has always been doing super great. We'll see if Ms. Britsky in the science department does good this year.
She comes around. We don't want to have a fight.
It's a secret, we'll see. And November is right around the corner, which means that homecoming is right around the corner, as it's November 2nd. And in the past, as always, it's been led by the student council. But this year, they're trying to let out people who are not in student council be a part of this planning process. And I know there's been students and also parents who've been involved. It's been happening since the beginning of the school year. We've had meetings at Scranton Library and all sorts of different types of meetings to make it as great as possible. So it should be a fun time. And then moving even farther along, exams this week, this year are gonna be before Thanksgiving, which in my opinion is the way to go, because we can leave team one behind us and enter the holiday season on a fresh foot.
Thank you. Any questions for our student reps? Not this time. Thank you very much. Yeah. So, all right, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, which I know is going to begin with recognition for some students here. Thank you for being here and Dr. Brooke.
Yeah, we have a great recognition tonight. So Brooke in great state for this one. Be great, because I got, yeah, it's still balling another as well. And so it's great to recognize some winners tonight. And I don't want to take too much of their thunder, but I know joining them is Principal Salteri and that's Principal Richard. And also, I don't know if his title in this part of his job is, but he's the boat race consultant. Anderson, and then a new title as well, permit to me, anybody, Coach B, is that the new Coach Richie? I mean, the boat race and some students. And just a little bit about the race, again, I don't want to take too much of your thunder, but it started in 2010, I believe, the boat races at a great point. And celebrates academic achievement, but there's also a physical piece to it, which is really exciting. And students have to apply what they've learned in the ECE course. And so we wanted to bring them forward with their fantastic boat and trophy. And to everybody, Coach B.
Yes, so this is our second year participating. Actually, they started in 2010, but only in 2016, they invited the physics classes. Can we believe that? So at hand, this is also the year participating. And we did start a little bit earlier, because the race is in September. So we actually started the engineering club, thinking about it last April and pulling in Mr. Anderson. That actually was my partner in crime at Westbrook, and we won two championships together. So this is our third. So, and the rest is, they did a great job. They planned it and they listened to some good advice. They put their own imprint on the boat construction. But we have here actually two teams. We have the team that won their first place in their kit and then the championship, the big trophy. And then we also have a representation from the team that won the third place in their kit, which is also awesome. And out of four boats, all four boats are pretty well constructed, so very well constructed. Yeah, we had a lot of fun. I'm gonna let them speak about their experience, construction and racing experience, what you guys know.
Yeah, so we started that engineering club last year, because we wanted to make engineering and like like that type of like interactive mathematics available to everyone. And especially stuff like the cardboard boat race, available to students not only that are like taking all physics. So it was really nice to see how people from the engineering club, that are in other UConn classes, like language or Spanish or classes like that, were able to participate as well. Which is how we won the interdisciplinary award. And then a lot of the design on our boat was inspired by students that aren't, were like, otherwise wouldn't have been able to be part of the competition, because they weren't in physics. The engineering boat was, I would say, was a big step because it allowed us to start working before the end of last school year. So, like, getting all of the materials and then constructing the boat, a lot took place over the summer before. So we were able to create a boat that was really well prepared.
Basically. I like that, that's, that's really great.
Yeah, so we got, we met probably five or six times, mostly on the weekends. And just came together and did some measurements to like find out what were the best designs for like the length and the width and the height of the boat. And then we used, we went to some like rug stores to get some like the structural components.
Yeah, the tubes were key to.
Right, right. And then we came back and cut through them to make like the structural parts of the boat. And then got quite a bit of duct tape to make it waterproof. And then use the duct tape to cover the, all of the cardboard before attaching that with even more duct tape. So, yeah, that was, that was, yeah, that was our building campaign.
What's the name of the boat again?
Usain Boat.
And Mr. Anderson pointed out to me, whose idea was a couple, that was genius.
So Max was at my house at about midnight on a Sunday night. I think we were losing our minds, I know that. We, at about 10, we finished like the main structure. And then we were like, if this thing, if we put it in the water after all this work, it tips, like, we're not gonna be able to look in the mirror the next day. So we added the, like, last minute, we added the pontoons to the side. And then there was that gap, it was midnight, we were like out of our minds, we were like, let's throw a couple along. Because we had all the empty rolls of duct tape sitting there.
I was part of the other team, I wasn't part of the engineering club, I was just a student in physics. And we had to come up with a different system of meeting every day to make sure that the boat was assembled differently for race day. So we would go during lunch, when we had free period, we would go build the boat. We had a ton of different people, so we delegated those responsibilities. Some people had to get the duct tape, some people had to get the cardboard tubes. And if you didn't have that much time to build, you were more of the materials gatherer than the actual builder of the boat. So we were able to handle those responsibilities differently. And I think the overall process, we learned kind of just the mechanics of a boat in general as well. We didn't have that much time, so the front of our boat was flat. So that was really difficult to row when I.
Feels the row.
Yeah, I was the bar. So it's super difficult to row, so that's definitely a suggestion for the next year. But I think overall, beyond that, we just learned kind of how to take stuff out of the textbook or out of paper and apply it to the real world, which is just super useful in everyday life.
So, yeah, so I think one of the biggest things I learned in this boat race was teamwork. We had a lot of teamwork. They were just talking about building the boat, I was also part of that process. We had to build a boat in a narrow set of requirements. And sometimes we'd be building and we'd realize that, you know, it's not within the requirements. So we have to make these small changes we discussed all together. And then there would be one person who brings the materials to a saw to cut it. One person pulling that, one person operating the saw. And another person getting all the duct tape out, everyone had a role, it was great. At the competition itself, Will and I had a little bit of teamwork. Yeah, I pushed the boat into the water with him. The first time around, I think I rushed a little bit and tilted it a little bit. Yeah. And a lot of water ended up getting the boat. But I tried to have a little bit better communication with Will, and that resulted in a little bit of better teamwork. So the second time around, there wasn't as much water in the boat, of course. That also had to do a little bit with adding the duct tape on the bottom. But, yeah, so that was the teamwork there. I also have to say, the spirit at the boat race was absolutely amazing. Everyone was cheering each other on. I barely heard any trash talk. It was, it was great, hearing everyone cheering, everyone else on, everyone helping each other at the end, no matter what team they're on. Yeah, it was really a great day.
Are you juniors or seniors or both?
Seniors.
Can you communicate that to other classes?
Oh, we make sure of that.
Hopefully, it counts on our names next year, with some new recruits to the engineering club through the club fair, which is really big thanks.
Where was the race held? Like, was it a whole lake?
Happy April 11 campus, in the south.
Oh, in the south, really? Oh, that's wonderful. 35 beach. Oh, okay. So it's actually.
Did other students from school come to cheer you guys on?
It was during the school years, they were.
School day, yeah.
Maybe junior.
We had, we had, we had a lot of school.
So was there one, one person in the boat at a time? And you use a canoe paddle or?
Yeah, so in our boat, there was only room for one, so at a kayak paddle. And then Eve, you were just one person. But then there was one team from hand, then two people in the boat. Yeah.
What materials did you use?
Just cardboard and duct tape.
That was it, that's it. Not that, we can't. It's amazing what you could do. You can use a paddle that is not cardboard, but that's, that's the only.
Our boat was, we took a long time designing it, but since it had the flat front, it was so hard to row. But I was able to stay up in the water for about five minutes, because we put some lipstick on it.
So there's the key to like get to a finish line, or just to be the last man standing?
Minimise.
Yeah, so it's around two buoys. So you leave from the shore and then you get back to the shore at a different spot. But it's definitely a combination of like weighing the speed versus like actually making it there, because a lot of teams didn't finish. Yeah.
Could you share your names with the board so that you get credit for it?
Hi, Jeffrey Yang. I'm Max Wheeler.
Well, why?
Eve Minnie.
And Brooke.
Yeah, our boat did sing, so.
Who said you were your boat?
Oh, we had some, we had some different names.
You get some boat names.
We had Romania, and then we had Ro versus Wayne.
That's pretty good.
We had a toss-up.
And you had, you guys had a great name.
We had the recycled Olympic village, that. We had the power board.
Yeah, that's what we needed this year was a whip it. Okay, so that's where we got the Usain boat.
Oh, Usain, wow. So have our home. So. So, takes the boat home. Now where does the boat left? For now, it's the physics class.
It's the dad of our interesting side.
Okay. Inspiring future and changes.
And all these issues.
And so the interdisciplinary, I'm sorry. And so the interdisciplinary part is students who are in ECE classes, but not the physics class, are able to participate.
Yes. And we also used the FabLab to do the stickers for the teams, to have like some many fine elements. We branched out, collaborate across the disciplines.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing this awesome victory with us. And we're proud of you and we're so happy to hear that you performed so well. It's, it's awesome, it's its own reward, right? Like, do you feel like you learned a lot?
Sure.
It's awesome.
Great, they're not too soon. It's very funny, people hitting us all. We can have some coaching. Very good, you know? It's so fun, right? You guys. No, they were in a hole, those can't forget this, because they're on the top street, the cardboard. That's great. Mr. Anderson, you're very, very nice.
No, we have guys who can take care of that. All right, thank you. And next slide, we have, as the bunch of calendar and guidelines, so the board has received copies. So those, we went over these tonight with the finance committee. But the finance committee has recommended they move forward. And so with, with Galen's approval, I just want to share some highlights and a little bit about what we discussed. And it'll, I'm sure, cover some other pieces with it as well when we get to the committee report. But the timeline is well in action right now. You know, you can see it's about halfway through in terms of the number of meetings already. It does follow the standard pretty much that's been in place for several years. You'll notice several meetings have not been determined yet. They are outside of the Board of Education's control. We are waiting here from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. I did share with the committee tonight that we have requested an earlier voting date in town, if at all possible with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. We are, we do vote on the later end of the second Tuesday in May. Many towns and cities vote earlier than that. The charter does allow that, and it's a new charter, relatively new charter. They did not move it last year, because I think they wanted to make sure they over-communicate that when, if it happens. But we have passed on our support for an earlier date if at all possible. We are waiting several big items, as you can imagine, you know, health insurance. This will be, you know, more difficult budget to put together than other years, because of the reorganization and some pieces that will impact that, such as we will, it relates to another, the next item on the agenda. But we will be going from, you know, six sites to four, but we will for certain time during the budget have all seven sites, you know, on our, on our budget, meaning TCLC, Ryerson, Jeffrey, even though they will not be schools for us come September, they will be on our, we would be operating them after July 1st, so they'd be part of this, this budget for all the facilities that lie in that area. But we have some, you know, challenges in terms of electricity. We'll have a very efficient school coming on, onboard, but also, you know, some increase in costs. So we're working on that, we started that process very, very early, as well as there'll be some staffing changes that will certainly impact. And then as well, health insurance, we're waiting for the first run on health insurance, you know, proposal from the CrossFit Shield. We are self-insured, as the board knows, but there is, you know, a lot of projections that are still in place for us to be able to. So that pretty much covers the calendar, as you can see. And then the committee reviewed the board priorities, and also the administrative council and operating budget objectives. And those are similar to what we've seen in the, in the past, except for, you know, a few items, as I mentioned, related to the reorganization. We continue to grapple with the Right to Read Act and what, how that impacts Madison, and also making sure that our current programs have the current funding that's required for the consumables and things like that. As the, the board knows as well, we're doing a pilot right now for Geo. So that is to move forward, there'll be a cost associated with that for, for next year. So a lot of conversations to, to still be, still be had related to the budget, you know. But as I mentioned, it started well over a month ago. So we've, we've been in a good place with those, those discussions and look forward to our discussions in the future with the, with the board event. As I mentioned, Ryerson, Jeffrey and TCLC, I just want to give a, an update, see if there's any outstanding questions from the board. As I mentioned in the previous board meeting, you know, as a, as a district, we do not see the, the need for us to operate those buildings going forward after the, you know, the reorganization happens and the Beck River Elementary School is, is onboard. There will be some times certainly where we will need to, you know, operate those, those buildings probably into the, into the school year, into, into September and October. You know, as we remove the remaining technology pieces and, and certainly some materials and furniture, once we get the, the school year started, our, our big, you know, operation, our big priority will be certainly starting the school year off, getting the, the buildings ready to, to go, that we'll be operating, and then we'll have some, some work still to do on those buildings. In Connecticut, they are all town of, they're town Madison buildings. The schools operate and have complete control over them, but at which point, they are no longer going to be a school. The board has the option of either hanging on to them or giving the keys back to the town. And our recommendation is point, we give the keys back to the, the town of all three buildings. I know the town would like to have that information as soon as possible. So if there's no board questions or concerns, and that doesn't happen to come forward tonight, feel free to let me know, or, or the board's executive committee know outside of this discussion, if there's any questions or concerns, but we would put that on a, a future agenda for, for board formal vote. And it would be at a date to be determined, but I think that would be hopeful. I know that would be helpful to the town to know that there is some, that indication that the buildings should be going back to. And then finally, a, a nice recognition for the, for the board event. So for the second year in a row, the Nassau Board of Ed has received the K-Board recognition award. And this program was created in 1998 to recognize excellence and leadership activities of local school boards. And so congratulations to the, to the board. The board will be recognized at the K-CAPS conference on Friday morning, November 15th. There's a commissioner, a picture with the Commissioner of Education. So even if you do not plan to attend or cannot attend the meeting, if you can join us for the picture, I know Seth knows the exact time, I believe it's somewhere around 10:30.
10:45 in the north lobby.
In the, in the north lobby at 10:45. So if you could join us at the, the St. Mary's or even just the picture, please do so. And we'll sneak you a cup of coffee or something. But again, congratulations to the, to the board. And I know that there's a higher level award than if we, we had, the board had certain parameters for that, that the board would be able to, for next year, having won this award two years in a row. So please, please to share that with you. Thank you. That was my report, thank you. And questions for Craig? Board member comments, any comments for the board? Online, in person?
I love having the students here to share. I mean, I said it briefly, we also do this every time new students present on a project.
um have all seven sites, you know, um on our on our budget, being T C L C, Ryerson, Jeffrey, even though they will not be um schools for us come September, they will be um on our, uh we would be operating them after July one, so they'd be part of this uh this budget for holding uh uh facilities type line of that area. Uh but uh we have some, you know, challenges in terms of electricity. We'll have a very uh efficient school coming on onboard, but also, you know, some um increase in costs. So there we're working on that. We started that process very very early, as well as there'll be some staffing changes that will certainly impact. And then as well, health insurance, we're waiting for uh the first run on health insurance um, you know, proposal from uh Blue Cross for Shield. Uh we are self-entured, as the board knows, but there is um, you know, uh a lot of um projections that are still into to place uh you know, for us to be able to. So uh that pretty much covers the the calendar, as you can see, and then the um committee reviewed the board priorities and also the uh administrative council and operating uh budget objectives. And it's uh those are similar to what we've seen in the in the past, except for uh, you know, a few items, as I mentioned, related to the reorganization. Uh we continue to uh grapple with the uh Right to Read um Act and what how that impacts Madison and also making sure that our current programs have uh the current funding that that's required for the consumables and and things like that. As the um the uh board knows as well, we're doing a pilot right now for for Geo, so that um is to move forward. There'll be a cost associated with that for for next year. So a lot of uh conversations to to still be still be had related related to budget, you know, uh but as I mentioned, it started well over a month ago. So we we've um been in a good place with those uh those discussions and look forward to our discussions in the future with the with the board event. Um as I mentioned, um Ryerson, Jeffrey and in T C L C, I just wanna give a uh an update, see if there's any outstanding questions from the board. Uh as I mentioned in a previous board meeting, you know, as a as a district, we do not see the the need for us to operate those buildings um going forward after the, you know, the uh reorganization happens and the and that river elementary school is is onboard. There will be some times certainly where we will need to um you know, operate those uh uh those buildings probably into the into the school year, into into September and October. Uh you know, as we uh um remove the remaining technology pieces and 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 certainly some materials and furniture, once we get the the school year started. Our our big uh, you know, operation, our big uh uh priority will be certainly starting the uh school year off and getting the the buildings ready to to go that we'll be operating and then we'll have some some work uh still to do on those those buildings. In Connecticut, they are all town of uh uh their town Madison buildings. Um the schools operate and have complete control over them, but uh at which point they are no longer going to be a a school, the board has the option of either hanging on to them or giving the keys back to the town. Our recommendation is point A to B, we give the keys back to the the town and all three buildings. I know the town would like to have that information as soon as possible, so if there's no board questions or concerns and that doesn't have to come forward tonight, feel free to let me know um or or the board's executive committee know outside of this discussion if there's any questions or concerns, but um we would put that on a uh a jet future agenda for for board for whole vote. And uh it would be at a date to be determined, but I think that would be hopeful. I know that would be helpful to the town to know that there is some that indication that the buildings should be going back to. And then finally, a uh a nice recognition for the for the board event. So for the second year in a row, the uh NASA board event has received the K Board Recognition Award. Uh and this program was created in nineteen ninety eight to recognize excellence in uh leadership activities of local school boards. And so congratulations to the uh to the board. The board will be recognized at the K Caps Conference on Friday morning, November fifteenth. Uh there's a commissioner of pitcher with the uh Commissioner of Education. So even if you do not plan to attend or not attend the meeting, if you can join us for the pitcher, I know Seth knows the exact time. I believe it's somewhere around ten thirty.
Ten, ten forty five in the north lobby.
In the in the north lobby at ten forty five. So uh um if you could join us at the the sick area for even just the pitcher, please do so and we'll sneak you a cup of coffee or something. Uh but uh um again, congratulations to the to the board and uh I know that there's a higher level award uh that is uh um we we have the board has certain parameters for that, that the board will be able to for next year, having won this award two years in a row. So please to please to share that with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's my report. Thank you. Thank you. And uh questions for Craig? None. Um board member comments? Any comments before? Online? In person?
I love I love having the students here to share. And I mean, I said to them, we also do this every time we have students present on a project or event. Um but it's really nice to have them and just have them here with their teacher slash coach. So.
And they're a huge boat. The heartbeat. That is great. If we get flooded tonight, we can just all.
Really.
Um yeah, no, absolutely. That's it's great to keep sight of what we're here for and it's it's the kids and we tend to be student focused, which I love about this board, but um to have the students in West Malia for something like that is is special. Um in terms of the K Board of Distinction Award, I just wanted to um and generally it's the superintendent that nominates the board and so does all the work compiling the application. So thank you very much uh both of you. Um and it's a it's an honor uh to to have this award for one of ten uh boards that are that received this distinction this year in the state of about a hundred and fifty eight uh districts. Um and then one other thing I wanted to mention, um just because I still have a smile stuck on my face from learning this news last week. Um the or a couple of weeks ago, the um Daniel Hand High School um was awarded the National Blue Ribboned School Distinction, which is amazing. It's the only high school in Connecticut that received it. Um one of only, I think, three schools in Connecticut that received us. Um and uh the State Board of Education or the State Department of Education um nominated us, uh which is an honor in and of itself. Uh but to win it shows that there's truly special work uh going on um at the high school. And I know in the past, both Brown and Jeffrey won um Blue Ribbon distinctions and may maybe other schools as well, but I'm going back about twenty years. That's about all my uh Madison memory carries me, but um we do special work here and and it's evident for an award like that. So thank you so much to the state for recognizing that and for the federal government, to the federal government for recognizing it as well, the Department of Education. Um okay, next item on the agenda, audience response to information presented. Do we have any comments from the audience? We have no audience here. Is there anyone online? No? Okay, thank you. Board committees and liaison updates, uh curriculum and student development, Steven. The curriculum committee has not met since our last meeting, so no re. Okay. Facilities committee, Emily.
Uh no reports.
Finance committee, I have a feeling Galen will have a report.
Well, yes, except for I think the barbed wire line could. Um I would just urge everybody to read the board's priorities and budget objectives. I think they make a lot of sense given our challenges and the reorganization. Um but other than that, I I think um the calendar is important. And we'll.
Um personnel committee, Maureen is unable to be with us this evening and um I think she would have no report anyway, which is we haven't met since the last meeting. Policy committee, uh Diane is is traveling tonight and unable to be here. She asked you to uh.
Yes, Galen will provide a report on their meeting. She did. We have not met. Uh we have three policies for your executive reading. Two of them are um legal updates, compliance with federal law. Um I think the policy summary is excellent. Um we'll we'll talk about it against what comes to.
Thank you. And learn liaison, Mary Anne was online.
Since we met uh October tenth, uh the superintendent's perspective was the main thing and it was apparent bill of rights for English learners and multilingual learners. Uh they explained the bill of rights uh was passed in twenty twenty four. The top five themes of the bill are educational equity, federal and state law compliance, linguistic rights of students, supporting student educational success, and promoting family environment. And that was the main thing of the of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um so seeing the questions, we'll move on to our first action item, which is uh I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six budget calendar.
So.
Please, Emily, I'll second and second it by Galen. Thank you. Um any discussion on the budget calendar, which was in our board package for everyone to review? Um I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Still nothing controversial. Okay, um uh no discussion. I will call a vote. Um all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries eight, nothing. Thank you.
You know, just be seven, that's it.
Oh, se- oh, seven, that's right.
Cause that ends.
Five. Seven, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Movements aren't accurate. I know, I think today.
Yeah, thank you. Um okay, action item nine. I need a motion to approve the following policies. Fifty seventy promotion slash acceleration slash retention. Fifty one, twenty point four, point two, point four, title nine of the education amendments of nineteen seventy two. Prohibitions of sex discrimination and sexual harassment, four, one, one, six point one, sexual harassment.
So.
Only the second. Second, Steven, thank you. Um any discussion on those?
I I I guess I'll just say, read into the record, uh fifty seventy for motion and acceleration retention. Uh it's recommended that we repeal this policy, replace it with updated model, motion and retention policy. Uh we further recommend that we locate this at six thousand two. The other two are designed to be in compliance with federal uh statutes.
And those recommendations were from, should have been a good one, and um also uh concurred upon the possible. Okay, um any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any extensions? Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Uh action item ten. I need a motion to approve a donation from the Madison Foundation to Daniel Hand High School in the amount of three thousand dollars for a three D printer.
So.
Kathy, thank you. Do I have a second?
But Mary Anne's saying.
Oh, Mary Anne, thank you. Okay, so now looking through the packet, my understanding, I guess one discussion now, looking through the packet, my understanding is that there's um a student or a group of students who are working on a project and they were able to get the Madison Foundation to donate a three D printer in conjunction with that project. Is that correct?
Yeah, they they were um seeking lots of uh um donations to to make sure that it was accomplished, so they donated one thousand.
Yes, the grace of the Lord's sake. Awesome. Okay, thank you. Um very generous, once again. Madison Foundation um helping out. Wonderful. Uh all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Nay? Any extensions? Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Um action item eleven. I need a motion to approve a donation from the Madison Foundation to the Gaines Club at Daniel Hand High School in the amount of thirty six hundred dollars to support students attending a three day STEM conference. Um do I have a uh motion? Emily, do I have a second?
Okay.
Kathy, thank you both. Um so discussion. Craig, you wanna just look the what's the Gaines Club?
Oh, it's a uh yeah. It's a club in town that um had a called a high school that had done some fundraising that has um basically wanted to send students to a to STEM conference and they um are sending it through the, yeah, giving the money towards through the board to be able to pay for that.
Thank you. Um again, Madison Foundation, thank you very much for stepping up and supporting the the schools. We greatly appreciate it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Correct. Opposed, nay? Any extensions? All uh unanimous? Motion carries seven, nothing. Action item twelve. I need a motion to approve a donation from Blue Delta Energy to Daniel Hand High School in the amount of twenty six hundred to support Luke Jacobson's three D printer project.
So.
Emily, thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, Galen, thank you. So. All right, um so it it looks like all we're three, we're all three of these or were two of them related to that project for?
The last. The last donation part of students independent project, which they were fundraising for a particular three D printer. That's what the last one is. The top two are donations to the Madison Foundation.
Okay, that's fantastic. All right, well, we always love a student taking initiative to to seek additional funds. Um now, I mean, I guess we should ask, does anybody know or have any objection to Blue Delta Energy? In particular, being a a donor. I suspect we have no problems with it or um okay.
No, 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 no concerns about Blue Delta, too. Um did we open up for discussion?
Yeah, I oh, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt, but wanted to ask if we rather have students present their independent projects to the board
or talk about them. Um if that's something that we should think about.
Well, I mean, so um lots of different projects. I think Luke would be a great one to bring forward, especially uh he had been thinking about this, he met with Mr. Solitario myself uh last year, last and and so he went into summer um already with a plan, you know, felt that this was additional need for the high school and uh wanted to kind of leave something to the high school as well. So it was really well thought out. So I think this would be a great one to bring forward. Um and we could think about some other ones, you know, Galen, when we're at the other talk to high school. Uh look at some other, you know, kind of projects that would would give a sampling.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that that would be, that would be great. Um.
It was just the one that was going to the fad lab. Three D printer.
Thank you. The uh donation.
Well, the year from the from my remember, one would go to the fablet, but the other one would go towards in the C T era.
Oh.
Fablet does have currently three D printers, but this, you know, additional high, but that's technology that's moving so fast.
Yeah, yes. All right. Um call the question. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh any extensions? So I'm sorry, can I get the online votes again? All in favor? Aye, okay, so it's unanimous, seven, nothing. Thank you all very much. Action item thirteen. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighth, twenty twenty four Board of Education. So, uh Steven? Second, Emily, thank you. Um any discussion, any recommended edits? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any extensions? Motion carries seven, nothing. Um any recommendations for future agenda items? Um and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Kathy? And second, Emily? Uh all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Seven, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone votes.
Take care.